With allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, is Nick or...
I think it's still going over at the counter.
Okay, okay. Well, Mr. Hill?
My first.
Your first up.
Is it okay?
You can come up.
I brought...
You're in the bus right away.
Man, there wasn't any warmth up there. I got five of them.
Sounds good. Here, you keep that. Take that one there and put that over there.
Just going over, we came down and ran field maintenance. We'll go back. Years, years ago, I think it actually was, four and six were drilled. I do this way back then and actually...
How old are you?
I'm old. Tell me down here, I'm real old.
Yeah.
Because that's back when Don Montgomery and Lamar were here.
Oh, yeah. Yeah.
Actually, I was in the field working when the plant, it's actually the first plant you come to now. I did all that and tied in the main and everything, so it's like... I came down, ran maintenance. What I did, I put a copy of the report. I was sitting Mike and everything. What we do, we come down, run a flow test on it. Change the motor oil, change the packing, and see how the pumps producing and the wells producing. If you jump back to like the fourth page, that's actually well number two. And that gives you what the well's doing in the center there, like the bottom line, where specific capacity on the far right, that gives you what the well is producing, how it's...
Wow, half.
And then on down, when you know the pump is presently developing, that gives you what the pumps doing. Those are two main components that you're looking at. And they were, well, two was definitely, you hit right on the money, it's down half on the specific capacity. Specific capacity is for every foot that the well drops when it's pumping, how much gallons you can pump per foot that it drops. Now, I won't get into all the details. You're looking to see what needs to be done.
So sixty-two feet deep, put in eighty-nine. Huh.
That's the well, yes.
Yeah, it's not real deep.
No, no, all of them out there are fairly shallow. I think ten and twelve. No, it's ten sixty foot, it's the mound on it. It's pounded up back there. Because two used to be Big Red for years. It was Big Red is what it was known as.
Huh.
It was actually two, because you actually had another well on the west side of the road too, that abandoned and finally just quit. Well, well, two, the specific capacity's down. Typically in Indiana, most well pumps get pulled and the well cleaned on an average of seven to ten years. So you're, you're in that range. The high iron typically averages a little bit ahead on these. Oh, well, two, it's definitely off there. The pump is off too bad. It's rated three fifty at eighty-seven. It's projected three fifty to seventy-two, so it's gonna fall off some. On well number four, to turn the page, the motor was making noise. And then also, you can see in the center where the gallons per minute doesn't have anything, the meter isn't working on that one. And those are downflow meters. There's a T. And the meter actually goes down in the pipe and measures the flow as it's going through the pipe instead of a normal main line meter. So it would need to be pulled and done. Six, good news. Six was fairly good on everything. The specific from twenty-two is still up there. The pumps actually slide ahead. It's three fifty at ninety-six. On number eight, in the discharge head, these are vertical turbines with the motor above. There's a discharge head and a shaft that goes all the way down to the pump bolts that turns it. And in the discharge head, there's what we call stuffing box. It's got packing and you tighten the packing down. It should leak about the size of a pencil lead, so it keeps it cool. And over time or whatever, this one is definitely grooved in the packing. If you tighten down too hard, over the years, it will groove and then it's hard to get the packing to seal. But it's definitely got something going on there on it. About the only way to do it is pull up and replace that top shafting and then set her back down. The difficult part in that, if you have them out of the well or anything, you have to get two good bacterial ecological samples afterwards before it goes back online, just to make sure everything's passing the Bacties, the safe water going to the plant. That was on eight. On well ten, it had, the top bearing in the motor was also making noise on it. And then he had trouble when he was getting his, we got a probe. We'd put down the well and when it gets in the water, it makes contact. And for some reason on this one, don't know if it's a joint leaking or something, it was giving him funny readings off and on, which typically isn't normal. So we wanted to look at it when we did that motor two. Going through the high service pumps, number one was still good. It was doing, actually it was shade above, three hundred at three ninety. So it was still above. Well, high service two, it's about thirty-four percent off. Should be doing six hundred at three hundred forty-eight feet of T D H. And it's projected six hundred to two hundred thirty feet of T D H. So it's, it needs to be pulled and have the pump like that. Hopefully it could be rebuilt. If not, it would be a new pump hole. High service three, the mechanical seal is leaking. In the plant, the high service pumps, instead of that stuffing box having packing, it's got a mechanical seal that keeps the water from spraying out or leaking just because of the drain in the floor and trying to get things like that. I believe that's why it's got the mechanical seal on. It needs to be done. You can still run the pump. You can still run all the pumps, but there's repairs that need to be made on them. High service four was also good. If you go past the high service pumps, I attached the quotes. On number two, at this point, I figured a four day double dis-surge cleaning. Now, if, if the well in three days starts cleaning up, we'll stop at three days. And then on the pump that we're hauling, I did, hopefully as a conservative number, I'd rather give you a worst case scenario than tell you it's gonna be half that number and then when it comes back, you're madder and all get out at me because it's hotter. If it comes in under that, everybody's like, "Yeah, it's cheaper." So I tried to do the worst case scenario. There is, we have seen some cases like, for instance, the motor. We always take it in to have new bearings, test it balanced and going through. They found some where some warning things are bad with the motor. And those kind of things, until we get into it, you just don't want to go. But I normally figure on the motors, a normal overhaul. That one's on number two. Get back three pages. I got number four. On number four, I would probably go to this point, just with the pulling the motor and going through it that way. With the seal. Trouble is, we're gonna have a trip down, pull it, and then a trip back to set it. So you get time on the road plus the overhaul on the motor. And I may, on the motor ones, there's a good chance, I just don't wanna say for sure, but I've got temporary motor. Then we pull this, we put our motor on there. I don't charge you for that. There are lower motors and if we're overhauling the motor, if it's three weeks, four weeks, I don't care on that, just so that you're staying in the water and you've got it to use. On well eight, pulling it and doing the head shaft is going there. And what I figured, hopefully Mike can take the two to take the Bacties samples instead of us having to make a trip. It's just a tough save on the cost of doing it. The last one on ten was the motor, pulling it and going through it. Now, let me also go, I did all these as individuals, so that if you decide to do one and anyone will wait for this and do a different one, that's fine. If you wanna try to get two of them at once, the travel time and everything will be cheaper on some of that. But I, again, I'd rather give you worst case scenario, I think in under, or we combine things. Now, let me also go, when you go to, like on well number two, that's, that's a little more than the others. If you do cleaning and pump overhaul. Davis Midwest is not a base, but we also try to work with the customers to give them need to space some of that out. We're willing to do that too. Usually, once it's all done, get the final bill, send it in, and maybe you guys come up and say, hey. Typically, they try to, they want to get like half down and then spread the rest out over it. If they need to do something a little different, they're usually pretty good. That's not my call, but I try to help sway them so that they do. Just because a dollar a night. I have an overlap there. Did I overload you a few months?
Well, my questions, you said we could do them kinda staggered. So what kind of timeframe are you, I know you can't put this down, you know, till the end of it, but what kind of timeframe do you think we're looking at before we have a, have a failure?
They're mechanical. They could go tomorrow. They could go April twenty-fourth. They're running and they're all working. I'm not a high pressure kind of guy. I don't like that when people are trying to tell me stuff. I could, be careful how I say this. I would, I would try to get the force next year. Now, they're mechanical. If it fails, we'll get here sooner. We'll get things going. But there's, we're almost first of December going into Thanksgiving. The end of the year is, let's say, a little busy for us.
So what's as soon as you could be on this?
As soon as you need us, as soon as you like.
Well, I'd like to get us the expense in next year. I mean, I think we...
Well, that's where I was going.
Yeah, we've had plenty of expenses this year, but I assume it'd be next year regardless. I mean...
Thank you.
Yeah, okay.
We can do your first week of January. I'm good with that.
Well, you know, it's...
I mean, you're, I'm sure you have a total on it. I mean, just looking at it real quick, I'd say we're looking at a hundred and twenty to do everything, correct?
Yeah, it's...
Twenty-seven.
Yeah, it's, yeah.
I would hope for less than...
I mean, worst case scenario, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah. And, and, let's just say it goes all of it. We're not gonna have everything done in January. As they get in, shoot me an email, what you're thinking. And they, what they, because we're not a bank and we're not, there's no finance charge or anything. Get the bill and say, "Hey, Tim, we'd like to do half now and then over the next two months, we have a board meeting on the twentieth of each month and the twenty-second, we can have your check in the mail." In an email, I send it to them. They turn around and say, "Yeah, that's fine." That's kind of what we...
I'd say we're gonna rely on your expertise and Mike's expertise of what, how we'd like to split it up, correct? As far as what we want done.
Right. I think we, we, it's a lot to digest, but we can, we can cash flow it next year. I mean, it's gonna take up a lot of our budget, but why put it off? We know we're gonna have to do it. Our operating balance is not... Well, let me check one more thing.
Well, I definitely don't want to...
You can speak up anytime you want to, Randy.
Citizens of this town would be not happy. Well, what, so in, in, I treat my customers the way they want to be treated. What I would try to get you guys to is that you're doing, you're doing some catch-up here in twenty-four, but at least in twenty-five, that you're doing like one well a year. And it may be that if we come in and run maintenance, everything looks good. Okay, let that roll over a year.
Yeah, we need a better plan. I suppose we should call it than what we've been doing to be nice to...
Regulars, proactive rather than proactive.
Proactive, there you go. Yeah, I mean, I know we're gonna, we've got to clear that up, but even after that, we still, what do we have? We got that left into the year, so I, I, yeah, it's, it's... But it's not gonna hit us all at once. They'll do some, the bills, do some more bills, I suppose.
As we get one done, we'll go to the next. See, I can get with Mike and come up with a game plan, get this one, this one, and maybe try to get those two together on like the motors. Everything's running now. If something happens, you call and we'll be here tomorrow, Saturday, whatever we gotta do. Let's just go to business.
Well, as far as a...
Go ahead.
Well, as far as a preventing program or proactive, what do you wanna call? You guys just come out and check every year or is there a cost to set that, you know?
We're, I think typically they're running at least for twenty-four, what they're talking is like three hundred and fifty bucks a piece.
Okay.
So it's not, you're not, and I usually try to do that either in the spring or the fall. We ran this in September, so probably next fall. What that does is gives during, from May to September, you really don't want me touching into wells unless it's an emergency, just because that's peak demand. So if we get in here in September, run the maintenance, October, get with you, then we can figure out what kind of time schedule works for you guys. As long as it's not twenty degrees with twenty-one hour wind, will still work. Clean your wells a little bit. We might not be doing that in January, depending on the weather.
Right.
But pulling the motors, the high service pumps, yeah, there's nothing that we can't.
Well, you wanna vote on to approve this or...
I'll move, I guess.
Hold on, favor?
Aye. So, yeah.
Do you wanna think about it for a minute or...
I'm so quick. Yeah, look at guys. Well, you know, we're doing them all. Yeah, I think so. I mean, we got a lot of work that needs to be done there. We can, we can get it in.
I didn't know if you wanna split it up, so it's us.
Yeah, it'll kind of be.
But once we get this done, well, we'll be in good shape for several years and do, you know, do an inspection every year and it'll be... Probably won't have this much again for a long time.
If, with what we're looking at on two, that plus maybe another... For a budget, I would probably just plug in fifty. And that, that's gonna cover you for a while. Eventually, with the five, do one every other year. And then maybe on the years in between, maybe do a high service pump. So that way, everything's getting rotated through and you're not hitting...
Well, does, does Peerless come up with a management program as, like you just stated? I mean, it'd be nice to have some document for our people to follow. I mean, I don't know what you Mac guys, what do you think, Mike?
Well, I mean, it's probably what we could do for here.
Right.
Every other year, do a, do a high service pump.
Well, we need a document, you know, I don't know. I mean, I guess it's like, we, we're into a contract with the water tower maintenance. And, and be nice, 'cause you know, boards change, employees change, but it'd be nice to have some document in-house. "Oh, this is what we're doing with the well field this year." So as people come and go, they still know what, you know, the plan is.
I'd be happy to. They're not, I'm fifth generation well driller, so it's not real high-tech. I give you the year, which one, and I go out.
Well, yeah, based on what you know about our wells and what we're going to do till next year, come up with a plan on, okay, well, this well, you know, yeah, set up a schedule for us, I guess, is what I'm asking. So future, future folks will know this is what we're doing. I appreciate that. I think it's a good place.
Now, what I don't know is the next four or five years, how all this is gonna, because some of these are twenty-twelve, twenty-ten.
Right.
You've got some that are...
Well, there's some old pumps there, you're saying, that may go outside of the program, the schedule. Well, yeah, yeah.
But that's the only part that, I mean, you're, the newest are oh-four.
Yeah, there's some old pumps.
The asterisks, she wants to pick that up any time.
Your schedule will still monitor all that, so you'll still have the information, even though you might end up replacing two pumps this year when you was only gonna do one. At least we'll already know that. Like I said, ten years from now, when this board's gone and maybe some of our employees, and yeah, it'll...
Yeah, it'd be nice to have a program as long as they don't lose it, you know? We'll, we'll have it.
Nope, that's why, there's Peru, Indiana, north of Kokomo. I did this like twenty years ago and they thought one year and they were tight on their budget. December, about December fifth or sixth, they called, "Hey, that pump that we're pushing to next year, it broke." So it, it at least gives you something in budgeting too, so you got a heads up.
Yeah, yeah.
My card's in there. If there's any questions, or if you want me back after we get done with all these, just to go over everything, I'm happy to. Just let me know.
I'm sure we'll have you back after.
That's fine. And if it's after, like after we run maintenance, if you want me to come down like I did and I can go over it, I'm happy to. I wanna, I wanna make sure you guys are comfortable with what we're doing, why we're doing it, and be able to justify, because I like on the, well, well, with thirty-four percent off, that's kind of an easy one. But as you go, it will, it's ten percent off this year. Two years, it drops to fifteen. You'll see them going down so that you know that that's, and I like to have two years in a row, but thirty-four percent's, I believe it's pretty, that was pretty much there.
Okay.
That's it?
I think so.
Thanks.
Appreciate you coming in.
After, from the quotes, if you just wanna sign those or you can email back or whatever, but then I'll schedule for, I'll get with Mike and we'll get one scheduled for probably the first, first week of January.
Okay.
Want to get on it? Thank you.
Thank you. Well, Randy, are you ready?
Claims four thirty-nine, seven ninety-seven, forty-five for approval, please.
I'll move, second.
Hold on, favor? Getting faster, isn't it?
I'm just gonna sit back today.
I have minutes.
Don't do that.
I wasn't able to get the minutes from October sixteenth approved at our last meeting, because we did have some absences, but I have those for approval and the November sixth minutes for approval.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Hold on, favor?
Aye.
And that one will...
That one, this goes over here?
Yeah. And then just, if everybody could sign the, please. And then I just added one more thing that I wanted to briefly talk about. I wasn't able to get the resolution for our CDs for the bank, although in the midst of things, CD rates have changed. Current CD rates for twelve months, uh, for financial bank are five point oh. Fountain Trust is five point two.
I was surprised.
Fountain Trust will go ahead and renew our CDs that we have at a five point two interest rate, which is currently, or only earning point two-five.
Is there a five point two worth for us financially?
Five point oh.
So we're...
Twenty basis points above now.
Okay, well...
We can renew all of them.
Said you were both.
One time?
At this time, we have, basically, we have half of them renewing the next three months and the other half will renew in October twenty-four.
So it's the six you originally presented?
Yes, but they will go ahead without penalty and renew the other ones from a quarter to five point two.
Sounds like it.
It wasn't my original proposal, but things have changed and rates have changed and say it...
Would you like to motion?
I would, please.
I'll move to do what Randy just said.
Hold on, favor?
Hey, Randy, I just came down.
And so did Chris. Do you wanna reprint that?
Just mark this through.
Oh, no, it's okay. Yeah, I'll, I'll make it work.
Okay, let me see.
So you just need to sign it.
Write it down.
It's okay.
All right, well, since Nick's not here, we'll jump in, jump the bill.
First thing I have is an addendum to the town employee handbook. Part highlighted in yellow that I handed out is the only thing that's changed. Being employees accumulating more than two hundred and sixteen hours holiday pay will be paid at the rate. And Chris asked me to add this, so I put it in here, rate of straight time for the surplus hours. And I changed it, I sent you the email. It said ninety days. I changed it to eighty-four. That makes it an even amount of pay periods if not used. So what I don't wanna see is where maybe somebody hasn't used holiday pay in five years and decides I wanna go to another department and then we gotta pay five years worth of holiday pay. Whereas this will just make them, if they haven't used it, about two hundred and sixteen hours, that will make it to where we will start paying them in small increments versus all at once at five years.
Well, is this a problem now, Bill? Is it...
No, this is just trying to look ahead and trying to prevent a problem that hasn't occurred.
You ran this by the police, the safety commission or...
I, I...
Okay.
How much motion to approve?
David, well, David?
Well, I wanna say something about this first. First of all, I mean, I wanna do a little more research. I mean, it sounds good, but also, I mean, we're a month away from the new year. I mean, I would like to just table, I'm not... I mean, I would like to just table, I mean, maybe not table it, but not approve it till the first of the year. And, um, is there a problem with that? Anybody have a problem with that or? I mean, you have a problem with that?
I have no problem with that.
Okay.
Just trying to look ahead.
Oh, yeah, I, I appreciate that. I just wanted to.
Better be proactive than reactive.
I heard you somewhere.
I think you said it.
The only thing I would like to add as far as the handbook goes is I would like to look into maybe sending our handbook, and I'll talk to Nick. Nick and I have actually talked about it before. But, uh, maybe sending our handbook to, um, I think there's actually certain attorneys that will revise the handbooks. There's typically a lot of gray area in there that needs cleaned up. So if that was the, um, this would be something that we could add to it.
Kind of didn't cost, cost them.
I, I have a guy's name, that's all I have, that Nick has given me, so I'll reach out to him.
Well, it's a good idea. You don't like gray areas.
Well.
No.
I mean, just to, just to expand on what I'm, I mean, I, I want to make sure that, I mean, this is also fair for the fire department, utility, I mean, there's, you know. Just making sure that we're above board on everything and, and not, you know.
Well, on, on, uh, what's that, the comp time? Well, we did web comp time, pay overtime. So we got rid of that problem. Now here we have, well, we have our holidays. Any other days we might get an issue with? There's only holidays.
I think the, I think the vacation's kind of already been addressed. Law enforcement's kind of a special thing because we don't always have the ability to give them time off when they've requested time off. So sometimes ours goes a little longer than the two years, just because of the often short staff, you know, like we have somebody at the academy or way of training or in quarter or whatnot. So sometimes it makes it hard to take that time.
And I can't see normal employees ever accumulating that much.
No, but I, I just want to make sure that when we're doing this, that, you know, the handbook reads a, a certain way for, you know, for everybody. Even though it won't be equal, I mean, you know what I'm saying, but it, it will be.
Proportionally, yeah.
So.
Fine with me.
And I know this is already, just as me reading this, and I know that you would only add it in yellow what's in addition, but the statement that states no additional pay or time off will be granted if an individual works on a scheduled holiday.
So I, I think if I understand that correctly, what that's saying is if I work Christmas day, I'm not getting paid extra for working Christmas day, but I'm still getting that holiday pay. So basically.
It just says time off, no additional pay or time off will be granted. To me, it reads as if if you work on a holiday, you're not being granted holiday, you know, in a later, or in lieu of that particular day.
Well, no holiday pay.
And if I was reading that incorrectly.
The way I understood it when they first did this was that basically if you work your holiday, you're not going to get time and a half or something.
Right.
For that holiday. You've already been given your holiday as part of your, uh, yearly pay. That's just to make sure that people don't think, well, I'm working a holiday, I get time and a half or double time or.
Well, that's where, I mean, basically what you guys do, like, you know, you work Christmas.
Yes.
Basically, you get another day off.
Yes.
I mean, that's how, it's basically a trade-off.
Yes.
And that's the way it's supposed to work.
Concerning time.
Is, isn't working that way?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean.
Okay.
It, it goes in the bank if you don't use it, you know, we keep track of, okay, nobody's used it, but.
So that's why, I guess that's where I'm going with this. As far as the bank, the banking of hours. I mean, you want to limit that banking to a year or six months or whatever.
We, we did two years with, uh, uh, vacation, so I just set up two sixteen, because that would be the max for two years, because you have the election year. Uh, so you did the ninety-six and then the, what is it, two or one twenty? So you had to, and you get the two sixteen, and that would make it to where you didn't get over a two-year time period of, uh, holidays.
Okay.
So another thing that needs to be considered then is like with the county, um, our holidays, twelve-hour shift people only get eight hours of holiday.
They get twelve.
Do they get twelve or do they get eight for that?
Twelve.
That probably needs to be specified.
Yeah, I agree, because you guys do work twelve for us.
I don't know if that will factor into this or not, but.
I, I, it doesn't say twelve, but what it does says it's ninety-six hours or a hundred and twenty, which when you look at the days, that would equal twelve times.
Okay.
I just didn't know if you have a section that says how it accrues or not, so. I would have to double check on that. I'm not going to tell you one thing, it'd be so.
Yeah, I, I, yeah.
Well, couple of good points. Why don't you check on some of those things, Bill, and, uh, come back to us.
Yeah, it's fine with me. I just, I mean, I read that three or four times. I, you know, without having a base to go off of, I was like, okay, I'm just, so.
Next thing is permission, I was asked to, uh, update the ordinance, uh, check their ninety panels. I was asked to do that, so I'm coming to you because you guys make the legislature, less legislation, not me, so.
Right now, it says something about vicious animals only vicious if it attacks.
A vicious animal's only vicious if it attacks a person. What about if it attacks another animal, a dog?
That's what we need to probably do some.
You know, whatever you, whatever you have.
The request is to include other animals.
Wow, okay.
Who made the request?
Um, uh, police commission.
That's a pretty broad, okay, well, ha, ha, well.
There've been some instances where maybe a particular dog has not attacked a person, although I think maybe the one that brought up the discussion has.
Well, they have attacked animals. I know an incident where, you know, um, yeah.
Yeah.
Then that poor thing attacked a person, so.
One of the problems with the ordinance is there's a lot of talk about impound, but we don't have a way to impound. I tried to get ahold of, uh, the Humane Shelter today to see if they would take the dogs if they were violent. Uh, and I haven't got a phone call back, a voicemail. Uh, we don't have the, uh, ability to house them if they were impounded. Uh, the fees are kind of laughable. Uh, I think it was like ten or fifteen dollars per day, and then they get their dog back. Uh, I was looking at Winfield's town.
Well, it's a purpose of impound, you know, uh.
To make sure it's not.
Well, it's already exhibited its behavior. Uh, well, well, I don't know.
So.
Can't put it down.
Are you looking to reset rates? I mean, if.
Reset rates and add stuff to it to make it more clear on what it, what a vicious dog is, or dangerous or reckless dog. Uh, I looked at Winfield's, they have a, a lot more, uh, definitions in there that define everything, and I think would probably work better for us. Uh, have a little bit more in it to give us a little bit more teeth in the ordinance.
I don't see an issue with it then. I'll meet.
I'd like to see the actual amendment though. Just a quote.
So which one are you looking at, ninety point one seven or?
Uh, most of ninety. I mean, there's no issue with the burial of the dead dogs or the barking dogs, but, uh, ninety point oh two. Ninety point one six, ninety point one seven, and then, uh, ninety point nine nine.
I mean, I've had an instance where an owner had a dog on a leash that allowed their dog to come and attack my dog.
I wouldn't do that.
Hmm. Just because it didn't bite him, doesn't mean it's vicious.
I'm glad you did.
Okay.
Brady's doing well at the academy. He will graduate on December fifteenth. Uh, so I'll be, uh, there at the school where they do the graduation on the fifteenth. And, uh, as of today, we still have no applications for, uh, crossing the road being turned in.
It's Friday, the second week.
Uh, it'd be, we had our last meeting, and it probably would have ran in Wednesday, so we got to Wednesday, now it'll be the second week. So by the next board meeting, it'll be like two and a half weeks. And then they'll let out for school like a week after that.
Yeah.
So I would recommend if we don't get anybody, that maybe we send letters home before Christmas break, that maybe in January, we don't have, if that's what you guys want to do.
Any, any questions? Nope. Go to Bill. Okay.
I don't have anything for the public report. I assume that Bill's probably already talked about the ordinances before I got here, but, okay, well, we can talk about that, I guess.
Which ordinance?
Uh, just the ordinance violations, kind of rock.
Oh.
Um, so we did have hearings set. Um, we had two of them resolved. Um, we've had two that have agreed to pay fines. Um, our next date on ordinance is November twenty-eighth. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven of them are set that day. Um.
If they agree to pay fines, does that mean they just don't?
They admit the violation and they pay the fine that's final bonded to the ordinance.
And then they don't evade the situation?
Well, so these ones, one was for a fire, um, where they violated the ordinance on it, so if they violate again, it's escalation, but, um, so they paid the, the maximum fine, which was a hundred dollars for biting late in that ordinance. So like Bill talks about, some of these ordinances, you know, don't have a lot of teeth, but they kind of are what they are too on some of them. Um, and I, I think the other one was in regards to a dog that they agreed to pay, that they admitted they violated it, but a lot of these ones, they escalate if they're repeat offenders. Um, with dog ordinances though, there is Indiana code in regards to dogs also, vicious animals, and them biting other people and attacking, and they also have the right to su- sue them civilly.
Well, the people indoor, animals?
They can sue.
Well, no.
Person civilly.
Yeah.
If you.
If the dog attacks another person's dog?
You sue them civilly for that.
Okay.
Because you've had damaged and incurred medical bills and things like that based on their failure to control their animal.
Right, that's good.
I mean, that's not a criminal penalty, but that's a civil penalty.
We have that door, we don't have that door?
They don't have, you don't have to.
Well, you have to.
Right, I mean, it's just like if they get loose and they kill cattle or things like that, you can sue them for the loss of your cattle. Um, so you've incurred financial harm, so. It'd be like if your neighbor knocks your fence over, you can sue the neighbor for the harm of your fence. So you do have that ability also.
I think he was thinking along the lines, they get a lot of calls or complaints about, and so they can't do anything if it's not a person right now.
Well, I, I mean, I didn't print those ordinances and you guys can look at them, but I, I'd be interested in seeing what Bill has in mind too. Um, you know, creative ways. A lot of these ordinances were drafted in nineteen eighty, nineteen ninety, things like that, so things change over time. Um, but I guess anyway, I got off topic. So two of them have agreed to pay fines. Um, and then we have seven set for the twenty-eighth. One of those is Montgomery, so whoever's coming on that wants to be there that day. The twenty, twenty-eighth is a, is that Tuesday? At one thirty. So that particular one, we'll have to go in front of the judge on, because they're not going to make an admission.
Is that the deal?
The other ones, I think we've been making progress on. Then our next date after that's December fifth. Um, and then we have December nineteenth and December twenty-ninth, and January twenty-third and January thirtieth. So we have quite a few ordinance dates coming up. Um, but the twenty-eighth's the big one with seven, so. Um, we have resolved a lot of them though, um, with fines or different things of that nature. But anyway, that's all I had.
All right, thank you.
I guess Mandy's been helping with the small claims things, but we do have on the twenty-eighth, a lot of small claims set as well, so. That's her first up today on her small claim stuff. She asked if I'd be there, so.
You ready, Doug?
Yeah. So, well, let you know the char- car chargers are ready to be installed. Um, concrete areas poured. I, uh, emailed the information out today, waiting on a reply on when they can be here to install them and, uh, put them online so we can start using them. So we're just waiting on information back from them.
So do they, they take care of the, there's a credit card, debit cards used to pay. They take care of that process too, I wonder?
Yeah, I, I, I don't know about that.
Send us a payment, after the fees, of course.
We'll have an account set up.
Okay. Okay, but they will come in and install the charger now. It's already, concrete bolts are sitting there, so we're just waiting on them now. So if they hear something the next day or two.
Make the play by.
And then we've been working back on the concrete Tulip Lane and, um, on Michigan and York, we got the curb we're hanging poured in there, where the sidewalk that we had.
You know, right there where, uh, Nia lives, you got what, pyramid here in the north end of, or south end of, uh, Voorhees, that pyramid you got in. They cut that little chunk of concrete right there, and I, I don't know if they realize, there's so many cuts. I hope, you might want to make enough, make sure they know there's, they should repair that. I mean, it's only about that big, but they cut it open.
Yeah, we're.
I saw them working on that sidewalk down there in front of the old rental property today.
On whose property?
Oh, on Howard, that rental property they.
Okay. Yeah, that, that's actually case, I think, doing that.
Yeah, this is, this is, this is center point.
Yeah.
That made you cut.
See, the ones that we're doing on Tulip Lane, we're doing for them.
Okay.
On Pennsylvania, did they, who was doing that work?
That's Miller Pipeline. And they're going to put all the sidewalks back in too. They discussed it with us, and I talked with Dave. We're just behind on Tulip Lane and Stark and some other stuff we need to do that. I didn't feel like we should take that on, so they're going to have case construction. We got a couple of trees we're going to remove, so they don't have to go around or anything like that, so we're going to get them removed.
I just noticed there were some complaints, condition.
Work.
On Pennsylvania where they work.
Well, yeah.
Well, they, I mean, they try to step on it. I mean, they, I'm with, out there about every day or pretty close. You know, the big complaint on some is just they kind of tend to overfill it a little bit.
They said it works when it's big.
Well, yeah, so.
Well.
But they, they are working on, they are starting on Tulip Lane cases, already repaired some of them, and they're doing a nice job to repair them.
Oh, yeah, they did great. Well, you know, I don't know if I talked to you about that. I, I talked to one of the fellows in the, in the shop there last week, and, no, they do all kinds of paving, not just crack repair. They're out of Edinburgh, Indiana, and, uh, I think next time we have jobs to, to bid out for, for blacktop, I'd love to try to get them bid. They do, they do great work from what I've seen around town.
Case?
Case.
Now, they've done a nice job coming back town repairing after Miller Pipeline, that's been for quite some time.
Yeah, yeah.
I think they get a lot of work, because, you know, sometimes it takes them a while to get here, but.
Yeah.
But, you know, a busy company is usually a pretty good company, so. Uh, so that, that's done. We've been, uh, working on cleaning up the square, the cemetery with leaves. Kind of hard to keep up with them, but.
I know, you had them all mowed up, married, looked great.
Yeah.
Wind came along, boom, next day, you guys are out there mowing again.
We got the back machine actually changed over the way it was originally supposed to be designed.
The Billy goat?
Yeah, and it's working much better, so the guys have been working with it, which helps out quite a bit and everything. Um, and then the Benjamin's Restaurant pre-phase is all in. Other than, we're waiting on them to put their meter base on it, and then we have to run a few more feet of wire, then that project will be all done. And, uh, our summer help is done for the year. They were great help, appreciate them. And then, uh, EMTA has started today on their pole changing, so we'll be in town for the next few weeks. They started out east of town out by the, uh, old lawnmower shop out there.
That's the, to upgrade that line out?
Well, we haven't got, that's just replacing some of the bad poles. We're still waiting on prices and what to upgrade.
Okay.
All that EMTA's still.
Well, you, while you're talking poles, what are we doing with the two poles over there on Market Street along the south side, or west side of Square? We putting them for the rich.
Oh, okay. They just, we've been trying to catch up and getting Benjamin's, and they just ain't had time to slip over there and pull them out.
Just going to pull them out?
Yeah, we'll pull them back out.
Okay.
Fill that in. But, yeah, they just, they've been trying to get Benjamins and other stuff in, and we just ain't had the time to swing in there. So, but that, we'll be getting on that. Um, like I said, and then, uh, parking lot lights have come in, they come in today. I believe we have everything, so in the next couple of weeks, along with some leaves and more concrete, and we'll be, um. Installing the water line out to Strawberry Road lift. We've been looking for that. Never did find them main, so we're just going to go up the road a little bit.
Need water there too?
Yeah, they have to have water for the washing part of it. So we'll start on that, I believe, tomorrow and everything. And, uh. So, and then like I said, our guys in the electric department, they've got South Market, Stark Street, uh, underground to put in, and then, uh, Barker gang has asked for three phase, so they got a bit of a three-phase system for Barker's. So next few weeks is going to be real busy, but we'll stay on it. So other than that, the only other thing I have is, is. Just a little. Nothing like Mike.
Water's part, it just went crazy, yeah.
I wanted to get this in before Mike.
Can't be that bad.
I'm wanting to order some, uh, salt for the roads.
Well, probably ought to have some, yeah.
And, um, twenty-five ton of it delivered. Their total cost is two thousand eight hundred and seventy-two dollars and seventy-seven cents.
All in favor?
Aye.
I believe that's all. I believe that's all, all I have.
We mentioned light poles. The one out there that got taken out last year during a, a winter, uh, ice was on the road there on the cemetery. You know anything of status?
We got the, we're getting the globes tomorrow. And the poles in March.
Wow, okay. Well, at least we know a schedule.
Yeah.
Huge backlog.
Yeah.
Are they? Is the material is poles, are they changing that?
I believe the new ones are.
Okay. Well, I thought we talked about.
Well, I hope so.
Yeah.
Those things are.
That's my understanding. That's another reason why I guess it delays a little bit. Part of it too is, is I guess, talking to Britten today. The first round, they ordered some of them. The guy that took the order, brought it up. So when he called back, because he hadn't heard nothing, didn't get orders right or something. So they had to redo the order, which delayed it a bit. But yeah, so we're hoping, like I said, we'll get the globes tomorrow, store them and then. As soon as they come in, like I said, like, I know Britten said today, he want, get on that parking lot and get them up. You know, so they're out of the way and not.
They're the decorative ones?
Yeah, they're, they're actually nice looking. Nice looking. They look nice though.
How much, how much room is there Doug between where we set those light fixtures in the parking lot? I mean, from where the actual post will set to the concrete edge, I mean, of the, where the son, sonic tubes would have been, you know what I'm saying?
Not right, I mean, you're talking about.
Well, I guess what I'm asking is, is there enough room to put for us to, to drill like a four inch hole?
For a ballast?
Set a ballast in front of each one of them?
I'd have to work. It'd be close.
Okay.
We can work tomorrow. Say like a four inch hole.
Probably four and a half or so, so we can get a piece of four inch steel in there and fill it full of concrete.
Okay, yeah, you're talking about where the curves are. So, yeah, I believe we have room for that. When you said concrete, I was thinking sidewalk or something. So I knew that.
Now, just where the sonnet tube, where you guys poured them? I mean, because they should be centered. So that's probably what, are those point four inch?
Uh, close, I believe. I think they all, but yeah, I, I, they, I'll double check and, um. I believe there should be.
Well, I noticed on that first, um, parking spot outside of the parking lot. That bumper had been moved and, you know, which there was a car park there. They had plenty of room, but it's a compact. So.
Yeah. Yeah, I can go look and, um. Is that something, if there's room, you want to go ahead and do or you want to wait and look or look into doing it? Like going to the welding shop and getting the piping?
Well, I think that'd be cheaper and, I mean, I know we, those poles are insured, but just changing them out.
Well, I tell you what, why don't you see what you can do in market and Dave can go take a look at it, get a boozle on it. See what you think. You've done those before.
Yeah.
So yeah, but it's a good idea. I know that one is you come in and out of the parking lot and there one light pole right by the entrance. Let's go. Yeah, cheaper than dealing with a new pole problem.
Yeah, I'll look at that. And then like I said, we'll, we'll market or something or do you want to just get ahold of me while we meet you up or something and we'll look at it, whatever you want to do.
I mean, we could back those holes. I mean, we could.
Oh, yeah. We could get a hole through that blacktop and then, you know, back straight down and get that pole set. Make very little mess.
Alrighty.
So that's all I got.
Okay, thank you. Do you want Mike to go or do you wanna? You got anything, Mike?
Uh, I do have one other thing. I got a quote from utility supply. They call it water cell. It's kind of to replace the flush item that's down there in both water field. It's a flush mount that mounts on that side of the building. It can be coin operated or prepaid cards. And prepaid, and of course they would have to come to the office and put so much money down on a card. They would have to look it up here. Degrees price, but that way instead of with a debit card, because it's. They said it's salty. I don't know how much more going that route. Plus you'd have to have the internet directly to that building. I kind of got that for you. I'm starting to have a little bit of issues with the flush iron that's there. I know we worked on it twice this year and the, the stainless and it's not, not the best. It has enough open and closed the way it should. You know, we just replaced the barrel a few days ago.
So. We're looking at.
Yeah, it was about fifty-three hundred, I think.
Fifty-three, fifteen.
Or something like that.
For that hydrant, for coin operated?
The cards are a dollar a piece.
Can you stop? Do we get so many herbs? Or did we get so many with it or not or?
They priced three, so I don't know how many, if that's all that Tim's looking, but they're a dollar a card. You can get them fifty packs or a hundred packs, however you want to get them.
Well, how do they, how do they love that up here in the office? How's that work? How you put money on the card, I guess?
Go ahead. I'm guessing a soft course system. I don't know about that part, part.
And then everything will be outside the building?
Everything will be outside the building.
So you wouldn't get water unless you have some coin on you or a wa, a card?
Correct.
Yeah. Yeah.
Right now they go, we can turn it on that because they get, we got a meter and they have to read.
What would it cost to replace that hydrant right now? I mean, the existing hydrant that's in there.
What, to put back what's it?
To put, to put back exactly.
Well, if you want to.
I don't know. They let them, what, what's that it's cost? Plus that roof would probably have to come off.
Right.
So a new one in there.
Well, I mean, I just want, you know, like I said, just wait it out and see.
Right.
I mean, I'm assuming the flush hydrant would be at least a couple of grand. I mean, they're up. Steamer's what, about sixty-five hundred bucks now or something like that?
How much water do we sell? I mean, how many, how many years is it gonna take to get our money back?
We sell a lot because we're cheap.
All year round.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah. It's, it's, a lot of semis in there, a lot of.
Yeah, a lot of semis right now.
Well, that's interesting. Okay, you got a fellow in the semi wants to get some water. We don't want to pull them up out front. How they do, I, I forget. How are they doing it now?
They just pull under. We have a spout.
Yeah, but how they paying for it?
They go inside to, to go through the door and there's a meter, water meter. They have to read the actual water meter.
Honor system.
Write it down and then when they're done, they write the final reading. And then it go, comes up here and. Brandy's ladies bill them just like they would send us a bill or whatever.
Yeah.
Does it normally match up?
Most of the time there are some people that try to fudge the numbers, but it's pretty cut and dry.
Yeah.
If you're the last guy and the next guy.
It should, it should, yeah.
Change a number. I mean, the only issues that we are running into is we've got a couple of people, um. Haven't paid their bulk water, um, you know, aside from. Sending them a letter saying that, you know, until they get their invoices paid in full, they really shouldn't be, but we're not down there. There's no. There's no one manning that station. So, um, we're kind of limited to what we can do there. But I wouldn't mind, Mike, if you don't care, um, to maybe call utility just to see how the, the office side of that would work. And then, um, if there, I mean, if there's not anything additional and the board wants to go that way, I think that'd be good.
So I guess we'll table it for tonight and see what you find out.
If you want to.
Thanks, Mike. Whenever you're ready to proceed. Don't hurry.
Uh, there's, I don't really have too much other than I'm, I'm getting ready to send notice out. Um. I forwarded all of you the project progress meeting. Foits does have the intentions of closing the road here at South Market, um, beginning on November twenty-seventh.
That's just to, to anything but local. I mean, local traffic.
Yes, and, and.
People live there.
Meaning right there, yeah. So, um.
So the detour will be in effect at that point?
That's what I'm being told. Uh, there's already been some comments made about the signage. Uh, the engineer has instructed the contractor to get the signs. Changed, updated with the proper dates. Uh, so that's all on South Market. The patronicity grant will begin, um, January first. I did speak about that at the last meeting. We can actually start taking donations as early as December first. So I will need to set up a line so that we can start putting those funds in there. Drinking water grant, um, forwarded the email from Roger this morning, um, but he's talked with IDM and we are still waiting on that variance. So once he gets all the clearance, we can go back to NDOT and, um, ask if they will get that approved so we can move forward. So I am holding off, uh, we're holding off on any work from the contractor and, um. As well as our closing of our line. So get those two kind of on hold. Uh, building addition is completed at the Strawberry Lift Station. Doug and I worked on, uh, I just got, uh, gas meter. To be installed there.
Got us an address too, I heard.
An address for you. Um, they've got Doug's number. I also gave, um, Center Point, um, Clint Kramer's number. So if there's any questions or anything they run into there, they should be able to get that installed. I asked for a date of November twenty-seventh for install, but that was just a date that they asked. So, but the guy did email me back and he said there shouldn't be any issues with getting that completed. So.
Okay, good.
Okay.
What's the water tank maybe?
So, real quick on Community Crossings.
Yes.
Obviously we were awarded that. We have to be under contract by when?
Four months from November third.
Okay, so. I mean, Roger, I mean, uh, DS has already went through that project. I mean, my recommendation is to continue with them. And see if we can't get somebody to. Three or four people to bid out and get them under contract so we can get this thing going.
We, I should have all the documents, um, by the first of December to advertise in the paper in the month of December. So that we could potentially take bids as early as January, possibly the first of February, give people some time to put some bids in, but.
Yeah, a lot of holidays, whatnot, people be gone. Uh, so we advertise the local paper. Where do we either usually advertise otherwise?
We haven't really done, I mean, we've done proper as well in the past, um.
Wouldn't there a state website to put that on? Is there a state website to run?
Possibly.
I don't know. I would. I mean, we, we, it would be interesting to see who might want to bid on it. And definitely like to see case, at least they'll let them know we have a project. Just get some, uh, more competition on our projects here.
Edinburgh?
Edinburgh. Uh, they have an office out of there. I hope they have a satellite there. That's where these guys are from. They're doing the crack repair. Or crack repair, whole repair, whatever. Uh, what else, Dave?
I think that's good for as far as that. We are still looking to put sidewalks in from forty-one.
Forty-one down to pines. Pines, yes.
Is that gonna be part of that project or is that?
Supposed to be. It was in the original design.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I know. It, uh, some stormwater work all over the Rockville Road. That'll help.
Yeah.
That road there at Pines drives horrible. Slow down. But that's a good thing in a way. You gotta have a speed bump though. Let's get, let's get.
It's gonna be a racetrack when it's new though.
Oh.
Yeah, wait till Market Street opens.
Uh-huh. We'll have to modify the speed and set up signs and.
Is it gonna be like Howard? It's a federal grant, so it's gonna be twenty miles an hour.
Monitor twenty-four seven?
That's not why it's twenty.
Okay. Is there any other old business?
Uh, yes. Um, where are we at? Okay, yeah, one thing. EMTA electric rates, they usually send something out. I don't know. They usually send it to our representative, probably Keith.
Okay.
So I don't know. Brandy wants to try to get ahold of Keith, um, and see if he's got anything. I don't know. They, I think they sent it in a formal package by mail, not email, but we need to see what electric rates are anticipated to go up next year or anything from our supplier. Uh, let's see, we talked about the Strawberry Road thing. Uh, the Asbury Building, yeah. Yeah, I'd like to get another appraisal on it. Ours is outdated. It goes back to March twenty twenty. We're, we're almost three years out. They only get it for two years, my understanding. Uh, why not? But anyway, I think we should get another appraisal and take a look at this, this property again. Um.
You want me to see if she's okay getting them also?
I believe she has. I asked her if it was still available about two, three weeks ago and she said it is or was. Uh.
And she might have as part of the estate, I guess, that, that would make.
I think she had an appraisal done just last week, I believe.
Okay. I can look into that.
Yeah, look into it, Nick. I mean, how's the board feel about it? It's about fifteen hundred bucks in appraisal on the building.
For it.
Well, I, I, well, I guess I should do a motion. I'll move.
I'll stick it.
Call favor.
Uh, let's see. Well, uh, I assume you sent out those invitations, everybody, for the, uh, Christmas, uh. Gathering and appreciation dinner on the fifteenth next month.
Our chief, sister chief, can maybe a graduate appreciate.
Uh, it doesn't start till evening.
Graduation starts at six?
Oh, it does. With dog on it.
Snapper perfect.
Yeah, you can be there, right? Oh. Well, RPD needing somebody there. You gotta represent. You gotta represent. You don't want, you know, Fire's gonna be there. You guys got somebody there.
Cameron can go.
Okay, well. Are you volunteering?
Volunteering.
Okay, okay. Anyway, very excited. Should be a nice evening. Sorry, can't make it, Bill.
Help out you.
Would you say it's the fifteenth?
Yeah. Fifteenth or what is it, six?
Yes.
Six. Can you make it, Nick?
It's a frame.
Get a steak and tater salad.
Who's cooking?
Jeffrey.
That all you got? I mean.
I, I'm out of stuff. I'm sorry.
Anybody else? Any public comment? Okay, I, I want, did want to say one thing real quick. Uh, wanted to thank the part timers since they've been. I appreciate all their help. Uh, I did want to say one thing. Uh, got a lot of compliments at the park this year. Uh, so Pam did a great job down there. So just wanted to say she does, does a good job.
Yeah, she does.
Are we inviting our part time people?
Yes.
Any employee, any board member?
About the employees that just quit.
Huh?
About the employees that just quit.
I don't know.
No.
Sorry.
Gotta stick around all.
Yeah, I, uh, we discussed it earlier. We decided part time.
Well, yeah, it should. Yeah, I mean, you don't want to offend anyone. It's supposed to be, you know, a happy time, happy season. Let's all be happy.
I'd like to put in the idea into you guys' heads of maybe adding some cameras down at the park.
Yeah.
Cemetery.
I thought we had cameras. Do we still have cameras?
We do have cameras. Uh, me and Doug are actually supposed to get together tomorrow and move some.
We've had them purchased for a while.
Figured we may need to add some more and maybe even at the cemetery since this vandalizing is going on. Maybe protect us up later.
Yeah, see the ballpark dug out.
Yeah, the spray paint. Can you see that?
Yeah.
Whoever did that needs to reach out to me. I'd like to have some artwork down.
Well, you know, I understand the same thing. Man, that would get a.
I mean, if they reach out to me, they might be able to make some money.
Might be able to decorate our buildings a little bit, right?
Okay.
Feel free to contest.
Somebody want to make.
Yep.
There you go.
Okay.
Well, everybody have a good Thanksgiving.